Technology.
Malia, do we know if we're ready to start? Okay.
Recording in progress.
Welcome, everybody. We'll begin our Provo Municipal Council meeting. It is Tuesday, September 6, 2022, and it is 5:32 PM. Meetings of the municipal council are being held in hybrid fashion. Members of the public can view, continue to view council meetings on YouTube or Facebook, or they may attend in person in the council chamber at the Provo City Center here. I will remind participants to mute your microphone when not speaking to minimize potential for background noises and conversations to be picked up, recorded, and broadcast for all to hear. My name is George Handley. I'm vice chair. I'm joined on the stands, stand by councilors Shipley, Fillmore, McKay, Ellsworth, Whipple, sorry, my brain's a little slow today. Mayor Kafusi, Wayne Parker, our chief administrative officer, and Gary Millard and Justin Harrison, our executive director, and staff who are assisting us with this meeting. We will begin, councillor, our chair, Travis Hoban is excused tonight. We'll have an opening prayer by Bill Holterstrom, after which councillor Shipley will lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful about before at this time at the beginning of the city council meeting. Grateful to work in a community where we work together to make it a stronger community where neighbor knows each other. Bless his council, bless his citizens, that they'll be able to be mindful of their neighbors. These things were asked for in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. As indicated on the screen, a public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak about that item. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following the presentation of the item, but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, up to 15 minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons who speak during this time to an agenda item, to an item that is on the agenda, will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium. Those participating on Zoom will need to use the raise hand feature to indicate they wish to comment. The chair may choose to alternate between in-person and online commenters. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence, and you will have two minutes to speak. To assist the city recorder with the minutes, we ask those commenting in person, are we still using the printing of the name? Okay, if you'll just state your name clearly at the podium, that will be helpful. And if necessary, spell your names out, especially for those online who might be wishing to fall in. So let me open the item, open the time up now for anyone who'd like to make a comment during our public comment period. Okay, seeing none and no one online, we will begin our, with our agenda. Item number one, a presentation regarding Provo's recognition as a 2022 digital inclusion trailblazer by the National Digital Inclusion Alliance. And this is presented by John Borget, Director of Administrative Services.
Thank you, Vice Chair Handley and the Honorable Counsel. On August 22, 2022, Provo City was named as a 2022 digital inclusion trailblazer by the National Digital Inclusion Alliance. Since the awards inception in 2016, cities have sought digital recognition, not only because it signals dedication to meet an unserved community need, but also due to the ongoing infrastructure investment and the Jobs Act, making such programs more necessary and influential. Imagine a life without online access. Most people are too addicted to their digital devices to ever be without them. A device with the internet connection has become necessary akin to water, power, and sanitation. Trailblazers are judged based on six criteria showing a city or county's digital inclusion leadership. These include having full-time local government staff, a digital inclusion plan, an online access coalition, survey research, funded digital including programming, and efforts to increase affordability to home broadband service. "We are pleased to receive this recognition honoring our decades of dedication to create and maintain a connected city within the right tools needed for a modern economically vibrant community," said Mayor Michelle Kupusi. "We continue to support our community's digital inclusion effort to improve resident access to an internet-capable community device, a robust broadband internet service, along with the knowledge to support them." "Provo's digital inclusion program is made possible by the efforts of our community-engaged partners, including United Way, Provo City, Provo School District, Provo Library, Provo Recreation Center, Provo Adult Education, Intuitive IT, Google Fiber, Comcast, and numerous other volunteers to give their time and love and better to their fellow man. We wanted to take this opportunity to recognize those key players in our community that have taken an active role in providing digital access in our community. First of all, I would like to mention Bill Holterstrom, Stephanie Anderson, and Bailey Swanson, all with United Way have played a significant effort. Jacob Braze with Google Fiber, Joseph Silverwig with Comcast, Dan France with Intuitive IT, S., Brian Yasi with the Provo School District, Nikki Wake with the Provo Adult Education, Carla Gordon with the Provo Library, Bailey Piddle with Provo Parks and Recreation, Wayne Parker, Josh Earrig, Catherine Draper, Dixon Holmes, all of Provo City. At this time, I would mention that some of these individuals have not been able to attend, but may be watching online. But there are a number that are here. We would like to invite them to come forward, and we'd like to recognize them and give them an opportunity to speak with the council and have an opportunity to be formally recognized. So if those are here, please come forward.
Should we do a photo?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know, we've never done it in this. Yeah, I think we should just try it here. Is that, is that gonna work? Do you think? Podium problem, but maybe we do. This is improvised. All right. Well, thank you for improvising with us on a photo and a new facility. We'll turn to our next item, which is an election of the municipal council chair and vice chair. I just want to introduce this item with a little bit of explanation and background. Travis Hoban, who's not able to be with us tonight because of a crazy flight schedule problem, which is happening all over the country. But anyway, he's sorry to miss this evening's meeting for that reason. But he had spoken to us on the council that he felt for, for reason, personal reasons, that he needed to step back from being chair of the council for the remaining four months of the year, that he would normally be serving as chair of the council. He did so with great regret. He has served very, very ably. But for those who are not aware that serving in a leadership position in the council requires added hours per week, that, that it's already hard enough, often for council members to balance their other responsibilities with serving on the council. So serving in leadership is, requires more time than normal. And so in good conscience, he felt like it was just better for him to step away rather than to not be able to give the kind of service that he wanted to. So we are going to elect a new chair and vice chair of the council, and I will call for a nomination for council chair. Mr. Shipley.
I'll move to nominate George Handley as chair and appreciate his willingness to do that. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion of that nomination? All right, I will call for a vote on that nomination. I'll begin with councillor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Councillor Fillmore.
Yes.
Councillor Whipple.
Yes.
Councillor Shipley.
Yes.
Councillor McKay.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that vote is unanimous, six in favor with Travis Hoban excused. And I will now call for a nomination for vice chair.
I'll make a motion to nominate Catrice McKay.
All right, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, councillor Whipple seconds that. Any discussion?
Chair, discussion is actually not permitted under the.
Ah, okay. There will be no discussion. Don't even think about it. All right, I'll call for a vote, and I'll begin with councillor Fillmore.
Yes.
Councillor Whipple.
Yes.
Councillor Shipley.
Yes.
Councillor McKay.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. George Handley, councillor Ellsworth.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That is also unanimous, six in favor with Travis Hoban excused. I think my fellow councillors and councillor McKay for her willingness to serve with me. I'm looking forward to working with her and with our staff and with the administration over the next four months to finish out the year. And then we'll go through this process again in December. But I'm glad to welcome councillor McKay and appreciate her willingness to give the time and energy to serving as vice chair. And I want to thank Travis Hoban again for the excellent service he has given to the community and to the council over this past year. It's been an eventful year, and he's done an excellent job. All right, we'll go to item number three, an implied motion on a resolution consenting to the. Yes.
Chair, I'm sorry. I believe there was a resolution. Oh, we decided not to do that. Never mind. Thank you.
Did I miss something? So we're on item number three? Okay. A resolution consenting to the appointment of individuals to various boards and commissions, and Mayor Kafusi will present the site.
Members of the municipal council, council chair Handley and vice chair McKay, I am recommending the following appointments to Provo City's boards and commissions as indicated, and submit them here with for the council's advice and consent. On the Parks and Recreation Board, Brittany Hyde, I am recommending Brittany be reappointed to a three-year term on the Parks and Recreation Board, ending June 30, 2025. On the Housing Authority, Lynette Hamseth, I am recommending Lynette be reappointed to a four-year term on the Housing Authority, ending June 30, 2026. On the Library Board, Karen Salmon, I am recommending Karen be reappointed to a two-year term on the Library Board, ending June 30, 2024. And Julie Nichols, I am recommending Julie be reappointed to a two-year term, also on the Library Board, ending June 30, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there any discussion of these proposals? All right, seeing none, I will call for a vote on the implied motion. I will begin the vote, and I will vote yes. Councillor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Councillor Fillmore.
Yes.
Councillor Whipple.
Yes.
Councillor Shipley. Councillor McKay.
Yes.
That is unanimous, six in favor with Travis Hoban excused. We'll turn to item number four, a resolution adopting a safety action plan in conjunction with the Safe Streets for All grant opportunity. This will be presented by Rob Hunter, city assistant city engineer. This item was discussed at some length earlier in our work session. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Handley. Yeah, we did discuss this. This is our third time coming to present on the Safety Action Plan and presenting the resolution to adopt it tonight. So in a minute, I'll turn the time back over to Vern and to Charles. But again, as I did in the work session, just wanted to express my appreciation to them. It's been a quick timeframe to be able to do this within the timeframe needed to go after this, the Safe Streets for All grant. I appreciate their hard work in it. And our plan tonight is to do a similar presentation to what we did for the work session today, but you know, just to be able to present it also to the, to the public as well as to you. If you have any additional questions, we are happy. That'll turn the time over to Vern.
Good evening, Chair Hadley, members of the city council, and Mayor Kafusi. My name is Vern Kiesler. For the record, I'm a consultant with Parametrics. And tonight we'll be asking and presenting Provo's Safety Action Plan. Provo's Safety Action Plan is actually a new federal stick, if you will, to get communities to adopt safety action plans and adopt a zero vision, zero policy. They're doing that by making about a billion dollars worth of funding available every year for the next five years. So this year, many communities are seeking grant opportunities to do their safety action plan. Provo has decided to not only do their safety action plan, but put in a grant application for implementation of a project. And so that strategy, hopefully, will be less competitive this year than in years to come, because most people will be working on their safety action plans. So tonight, we have about half the number of slides that I showed two weeks ago. The contents of a safety action plan are the following eight sections. The leader's commitment and goal setting is what we're about tonight. We're adopting that safety action plan and the setting a goal to reduce our fatalities and zero injury crashes by 50% by 2040, and then afterwards seek that vision zero. As everybody is aware, safety is a very important issue. And unfortunately, we've had an incident that really made some headlines and just tragic situation. I'm not sure if engineering and other technologies could have designed something to prevent that. But I will say that it has not gone unnoticed by our staff as we've prepared this plan. Move forward and talk about the vision zero commitment. That's the 50% reduction by 2040. The four Es that will allow for this plan for implementation and setting, pleading of objectives of the goals is education, enforcement, engineering, and evaluation. A lot of communities do plans and a lot of safety organizations, and they'll call it the three Es. They do education, enforcement, and engineering. But rarely do they go back and evaluate what works and the new data. And this is actually what Provo City is doing now, is a little bit of evaluation. Because in the Transportation Master Plan that was adopted in 2020, there was a whole chapter on safety. But that chapter looked at three years of data that was different than the three years of data that we're looking at now. With that, I'm going to tag team this a little bit tonight with Charles Allen. He's our, one of our licensed professional engineers in our consulting firm. But what makes him unique is he's a professional traffic operations engineer, PTOE. So we'll have Charles come up here and present the safety data.
Thank you, Vern. As mentioned, I'm Charles Allen, also with the consulting firm Parametrics. It's been a pleasure to work on this project and to share some materials that we hope benefits. Today, I'm going to present several materials that are, some overview maps and statistics about safety and crashes within the city of Provo. What we have here on the map are two graphs. The one on the left is a depiction of all the crashes occurring within Provo City for the three-year study period. And the crashes are color-coded according to severity, and the severity is defined as the highest level of injury occurring in the crash. So if a crash resulted in fatality, it's coded as a fatal crash, known in as a red dot. And if there are no injuries at all, then that's coded as a no injury crash, or PDO, which stands for property damage only, blue. And then the range, there's a range between those two. The map on the right is showing the same data, but as a heat map used to indicate the intensity or frequency of these crashes as they occurred. When you look at the map of just the crash dots themselves, it's hard to, harder to find patterns and meaning in here, volume of crashes that have occurred. So heat maps helps us identify where crashes are occurring the most frequently. Now, there is a correlation between traffic volume and crash frequency. So look into map, you'll see a lot of these hotspots, if you call them, tend to occur on roads. But there's, there's still plenty to learn from at an image like this. Our next slide is a breakdown of the crashes by severity throughout the city. Our next slide is a breakdown of the crashes by severity throughout the city. Fatal crashes accounted for 12 crashes, which is point three percent of all crashes. And uh thankfully, most crashes resulted in no injury, six like to see, but like to reduce as many crashes as possible, especially the serious. If we break down crashes by type, we can start to determine uh what are some of the correlations or causes for most of the crashes within the city. But the two most common crash types are angle crashes and rear-end crashes. Angle crashes can also be referred to as T-bone crashes. Generally, it's a crash where two vehicles traveling in different directions, usually perpendicular to one another, uh collide. So these frequently happen at intersections traveling perpendicular to each other. Um, not to be confused with a head-on crash where that's generally vehicles traveling in opposing directions when they collide with each other. The second most common type of crashes are rear-end crashes. Both of these two crash types, angle and rear-end are pretty common crash types in metropolitan areas. Uh, because there's higher traffic volumes, there's a higher density of intersections, and there's more congestion. Each of those two crashes tend to be correlated with higher levels of congestion. So 35% of the crashes were angle crashes and close to 30% were rear ends. So that's that's quite a few within the city. Count for just those two crashes. Pedestrian bicycle crashes account for 2.3% and 2% respectively. Um, we like to see that as low as possible because those crashes tend to result in higher injuries, given the fact that when we're walking and and cycling uh much more susceptible to serious injury when in uh being struck by a vehicle. So we've looked at a map of all the crashes. These are two maps that focus just on those fatal and serious injury crashes, but they left shows the fatal crashes in red and the serious injury crashes in orange. And then we have another heat map on the right that shows where the highest frequencies of those crashes. If you were to compare the heat map of all crashes versus this one, you'd start to see some different patterns. So the colors change. And when we focus on those crashes that result in the highest level of injury, some of the locations are to emerge overall crash heat map. Now we have a breakdown of fatal and serious injury crashes according to emphasis area. The emphasis areas are defined as uh areas or characteristics that um tend to be systemic or problematic throughout the geography. So we see things like crashes involving young drivers and crashes involving older drivers, speed-related crashes, motorcycle-related roadway emphasis areas uh point us towards where we might look for mitigations to try and address these crash patterns. So the table also compares the rate of these types of crashes versus rates across the state of Utah and within all of Utah counties as a whole. So we can see where um, you know, maybe Provo stands out a little bit more compared to these areas, or maybe where certain crash types are less frequent in Provo City. So for example, with young drivers statewide, uh 16% of fatal and serious injury crashes involved a young driver. Meanwhile, that percentage for Utah County is 21%, and then for Provo City, it's just under 14. We can take a look at some of these other characteristics and examine the patterns. For example, impaired driving, it's higher statewide, much higher at 17.3%, and the rate in Provo City is about half of that at 8.2%.
Councillor McKay has a question.
Yes.
Out of curiosity, what is considered a young driver? Is it 18 and under or 16 or?
I believe it's 18 and under.
Okay, thank you.
I won't answer the older one or else actually, there's a, there's a definition. I believe it's 64 and above. So I didn't, it's not my decision, so don't get mad at me. I did not make the classification. But yeah, I believe it's 64 and above.
I'm 57, Shannon.
Well, and you're, you're a cyclist. I'm sorry.
Um, now, it brings up a good point. Um, people can be more, you know, a crash can fit in more than one of these categories. So a crash that's speed-related can also have a motorcycle, can be a roadway departure crash and have an older driver. So there's a little bit I don't want to say double counting, but there's some crossover of classifications. Um, interestingly, the rate of distracted driving in Provo City is slightly higher than these other geographies at Meanwhile, um, there's just other patterns that can be observed. For example, intersection-related crashes. You know, 40%, uh, we're seeing 40% and above across all geographies for crashes and resulting in a fatal uh fatality or serious injury. Can also examine fatal and serious injury crashes by the crash type. And there's some differences in this, between this table and the the table for all crashes. For example, in the previous tables is angle crashes at number one and rear-end crashes at number two. And now uh the rear-end crashes have dropped much farther down on the list. They tend to result in in less severe injuries than crash types such as angle crashes and fixed object crashes, which just means a vehicle running into something that's not another vehicle, but a fixed object on the roadside or um or sometimes out of uh beyond the road itself. Um, but interestingly, pedestrian crashes rises up to number three. 15 fatal and serious injury crashes involving pedestrians. So our uh sometimes termed vulnerable road users account for quite a few of these fatal and serious injury crashes. Kind of speaks towards just the risk involved with um, you know, people in These are the key characteristics for the 12 fatal crashes occurring in our study period. So three in 2019, four in 20 five in 2021. And looking through these characteristics, uh, we can look at the crash type, the emphasis area that may have been involved, as well as any other contributing factors. There's a lot of common threads between all these crashes that are important to observe. There's um quite a bit of uh speed involved crashes. There's uh impairments um uh motorcycles and pedestrians. Then sometimes other characteristics like um dark conditions.
Councillor Ellsworth has a question.
Uh, I'm sorry, it's not totally related to this slide, but I just thought of it and maybe it was discussed in another meeting and I just forgot. But is all of the data from 2019 to 2021?
That's right. In in the, in the safety action plan, we do have some statistics that go for a much longer time period, I think. Ten years' worth of fatal and serious injury crash trend.
I'm just thinking there were very likely different driving and commuting and uh active transportation trends since the pandemic began in the United States in about March 2020. Is that being taken into account or are we just going with this data because that's what's available or that's what the grant requires?
It's, it's good practice to to find the right timeframe to analyze. Uh, you go back too far and like you mentioned, things have changed, not just from travel patterns, but um infrastructure changes. You know, you just go back five years and there's several roads that look completely different than they do today.
Okay.
Um, but if you pick too narrow of a window, then your analysis is too susceptible to outliers. And um don't have a a well, well-developed data set to establish clear pattern. So in urban areas, it's common to look at at least three years of data. Um, or going uh back farther in urban areas, you're more likely to run into changes and you could go to a rural area and things haven't changed in, you know, decade. But in in urban areas, things change quickly. Um, also, the more you're, you add into the analysis, just the larger the data set becomes. Analysis effort increases.
Okay, but given the pandemic and the anomalies, you feel like this is a decent sample for purposes?
It's, it's good for overall crashes. Um, but what you're referring to is exactly why we went back 10 years to look at some of the fatal and serious injury crash. So for example, I believe there's a big spike um in 2018, there were eight fatal and serious injury crashes in Provo City. And then the next year in 2019, there were just three. But um, you know, nationally, uh fatalities have been going up, pedestrian crashes have been going up. A lot more distracted driving. So there's certainly a lot of trends that have some correlation with the pandemic and and many social scientists are still trying to figure out what exactly is for all this, you know, increases in speed-related bicycle-related crashes, et cetera. Uh, we'll continue on with the uh final set of data, which is a series of three maps. The first one on the left is showing the high injury network. So this is defined as roadways that have shown a higher frequency of fatal and serious injury crashes. Um, it's useful to look at this because it paints a picture of the majority of the fatal and serious injury crashes are occurring on a small subsegment of roads relative to the rest of the city. So think about how many, you know, miles of roads are within Provo City. It's really a, a small percentage where most of these are. So that network also helps us target where we can have the most effect with our treatments. The middle map overlays the high injury network with the disadvantaged communities analysis, which has been um discussed in the report, has been discussed at some previous meetings. Um, it's important to examine these two together as we consider some of the criteria that are required for this action plan. And then finally, the map on the right is uh showing where the projects identified in the safety action plan. So some of these projects are intersection treatments and others are treatments for roadway sector. So the, the data and the analysis uh helps paint the picture of what's happening in the city. Uh, we couple that with socioeconomic analysis as well as um trying to identify a crash patterns from, excuse me, trying to identify patterns from the crashes themselves, as well as looking at things systematically and seeing where Provo City might differ from other areas or have different over representations of crash types. As one would refer, and all that drives us towards what are some of the actions or improvements that can be taken to help us achieve the goal of reducing crashes. Well, that concludes the the data information that we have in the presentation today. Online, there is a a series of maps and information. They call it a story map and the link is provided in this slide. And the safety action plan itself will also be uploaded to site shortly. Do we, um, I'm in a happy to answer any other questions that
Councillor Fillmore.
Thank you, Chair Hanley. Uh, I wonder if you and your colleagues are far enough along yet where you can tell us top three or four areas in the city that would merit addressing funds. There's three or four highest risk areas or zones in the city. I'm not asking you to prioritize it necessarily, but where's your focus?
So I think I heard maybe a a two-part question, or maybe there's um two questions. One is the highest focus areas, and then maybe a separate question is the highest focus areas for the grant? Or do you mean to just ask about what's the?
Yeah, I guess those are similar, but not quite the same, right? I I'm just wondering if, as you look at high-risk areas, high accident propensity, most concerned, uh those three or four top areas are.
Yeah, the way, the why, the reason I view them as separate questions is because um you can have an analysis that says, here's some areas where there's a crash problem and they can identify projects for that. And that's a separate question from how are we going to pay for those projects.
Right, take first one first.
So the first one is I would refer to multiple things. Um, we can go back to our overall heat map. We go, and the biggest, the brightest spot that shows up is the Center Street interchange. Has the highest number of crashes, also has a very high volume. Um, that's also a state facility. So there's another partner involved. And uh that can make things a little bit easier. Maybe it can make things a little bit harder, just depending on types of solutions that can be implemented there. So that's one of the highest frequent crash locations. Um, we've also identified when we start to look at fatal and serious injury crashes, uh the Center Street interchange shows up again, but we also see some hotspots that didn't show previously, like on State Street in Grandview. Which is the, you know, almost the second brightest spot on this image.
We see in Grandview, what intersect?
Uh, Grandview, oh.
Columbia Lane.
Road, I'm, I'm blanking on the suffix. They um, those are, those are two particular intersections that show up in the analysis. And then we also see some corridors, and I'll kind of point to the high injury network better of note. So taking a look at a university, South University Avenue between uh I-15 and 920 South has a lot of angle crashes and those tend to be concerning because they are likely to result in there's some fatal injury crashes, as well as University Avenue, about 800 North and Cougar Boulevard. There are a lot of, lots and lots of rear-end crashes, lots of distracted driving crashes. And even some pedestrian crashes in that area. So uh, those are definitely areas where there are frequent crashes. Um, again, the question of what to address first, there's just a lot of other factors involved, such as funding, community support that I cannot fully address.
Well, it's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Whipple.
So looking at your fatal key crash statistics page, I noticed that seven of these are speed-related crashes. And I'm wondering um how this plan addresses that tension between implementing engineering solutions to do traffic calming, to slow people down while keeping a smooth flow of traffic, which generally keeps cars moving quickly. Because these, these aren't the crashes that involve pedestrians. These are just cars going too fast, and they go too fast because they feel like they can on our nice wide streets.
Um, a couple of the, the um patterns that we've seen um lend to recommendation for some education and enforcement. And uh, speed can be one of those. I I talked a little bit earlier, referred to some of the patterns seen nationwide about increased speed-related crashes. Um, some postulate that when the cook, when the pandemic opened up roads, because nobody's driving on them, that people started taking advantage of that and driving super, super fast. And some of those habits have continued even as roads have filled up again. So um, you know, enforcement and education can, can have effects that engineering can't.
Yeah, but I mean, I live on 300 South where the speed limit's 35, and even with the new lights, it's hard to only go 35 on that street. You know, it's this nice straightaway state street. It lends itself to going quickly. It's very hard for drivers, even when they're conscious of the speed limit, to go that slow, and it honestly ticks off everyone behind them. So that's a case where the actual physical facility encourages a high speed, and that's not something that you can really overcome with education or enforcement because it's, it's just what's there. It's how you act in that situation.
Um, and and that speaks towards um, there needs to be a larger vision effort with particular roadway corridors about what are the needs of this corridor, what do we want it to be? And then you can start to answer the questions of how many lanes do we need? What uh, what is the width of the shoulder need to be? Are there bicycle needs that we provide, that we need to provide for their pedestrian? Those, those have to all be considered when determining what a road needs to fully look like. Um, the safety action plans tend to be more of what can we do um to address a problem area? You know, and not necessarily let's do a comprehensive planning effort for different roadways within the city.
Well, for the sake of the public, um, maybe I'll just make uh one quick comment. Um, you've sort of alluded to this already and we we did have this is now a second discussion of this um on the council. Um, this is a resolution to adopt a safety action plan that is in conjunction with the Safe Streets for All Grant Opportunity that's coming up. Um, earlier today, uh, you and others commented on the fact that this safety action plan is a living document. It's something that we will want to continue to look at and fine-tune and improve as uh needs allow. Um, but for our purposes tonight, then we're just uh need, we're going to need to vote on adopting this safety action plan in conjunction with that uh grant opportunity that's coming forward. Are there any, any other discussions or questions on about this that would pertain? Are there any, any other discussions or questions about this that would pertain to that objective tonight? Okay, no, no further comments, then I'll, it's actually an implied motion, so I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. Oh, we, yes, sorry. Let's open it up for public comment. Apologies. Anybody from the public here in the council chambers or online that would like to speak to this item? Hello, Kat. Please state your name and residence.
Kat Lindberg, live on eight twenty north in Provo. I know this isn't specific to eight twenty north, but to Council Member Whipple, your point of a straight road. Eight twenty north is proposed to be widened and straightened. And that just causes more problems, more areas of concern. And if you look at all of the heat maps, eight twenty north doesn't have any of those problems. But if you make it a higher speed road and a wider road, there will be. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? No one online, so I'll bring it back to the council. And if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with Counselor Fillmore.
Yes.
Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Shipley.
Yes.
Counselor McKay.
Yes.
I, Counselor Handley will vote yes. Counselor Ellsworth.
Yes.
All right, that vote is six in favor, none opposed, and Counselor Hoban excused. Thank you for all your work on this and we'll continue to benefit from your good services as we move forward on that objective. There is no objection. We will now adjourn the Provo Municipal Council Meeting by unanimous consent. Thank you.